...that feeds to the stream.
Yeah.
So it all feeds that to the stream. Did I answer your question?
It does, yeah, it does.
We're gonna try to plan to do this part of the bottom third.
At the same time.
Or the side guy.
Yeah, it's one of those things where the flow's kind of already going down here there, so it's kind of at the contract, but we can't cut the contract. Needs a method, so I can't tell them how to do it. You start telling them how to do it, then you got liability.
Yeah.
Here's the plan. We can kind of, that makes more sense to kind of fix the moleside and look the way up, but it's up to the contractor.
Okay.
Again, a lot of details on those plans. So just sit down at the big table, flip through them, write down any questions you have. Again, these are all preliminary. Then finalize, we can switch gears. Somebody comes up with a better idea, and it's really a homeowner's in this area, in this area.
Do you guys want to do a meeting just for reviewing all those plans? Do you want me to do that where you?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Why don't we do that? We'll set a meeting for just a work session.
That was also about the ditch line.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a concrete ditch.
Uh, probably not. That's pretty much, I don't know if you've been up there on that right side, but that's pretty much a concrete ditch already. That's rock. And the whole side is. You really want to slow it down. Sometimes just the plane just looks pretty, but it really just speeds things up a little bit. And I would, I don't, you shouldn't have significant erosion down through there on the ditch line. It should be self-maintained because it is weathered rock on that side.
And ever to get this thing off of the ground, what's your availability?
Anything?
For a meeting with the council, the work session, just go over all the stuff?
Whenever. I mean, I can be a little long, so next week, we could have to.
Do you need a good for you Tuesdays, Thursdays?
Thursday.
You guys good for Thursday?
Next Thursday?
Get it to next Thursday.
Let me look, my phone is dead. What about that Thursday, the 22nd?
I'll be leaving for 22.
Oh, we can't. That's right. How about Thursday, the 15th?
Probably here.
Tuesday, the 13th? Tuesday, the 13th?
Wow. That works good.
I didn't like that word.
Okay.
What time?
Do you know where that crosses over to the other side? Do you know where that lands at the driveways that's currently there?
Tuesday, 15, 7 p.m.
It's below, it's below, yeah, well below all the, this is.
That's the only thing.
And we're in the, there's no driveways on that side, the way that that plant falls, if they can hillside back to the hillside area. And again, everything, all the extensions are in the rideaway, so we don't have to do the tenant. The rideaway landing, it'll buy, it'll swap in, no agreements, the way we did before, some of the agreements that we had.
Did you say what?
Tuesday, the 13th, 7 p.m.
And that's specifically just for discussion?
Yes, just for this, to go through all the plans.
With a potential partner? Or that'd be before, be a good time to kill.
We could invite them, yeah.
We'll send out an email. I'm not an email, but we'll send out a letter.
If you would like, I can send an electronic copy of the whole set of plans. Sometimes it's easier to sit at your desk and kind of zoom in on specific parts.
I think that, if you could do that, send it to Anne Kelsey, and then we'll distribute it to the, the negative, the homeowner or ask for what we want to take on site as well.
And that's the final last, everybody's comfortable and they think, you know. The math or the engineering, it's just a matter of, you want the home, we should be happy with the finished product now. Are we gonna work through the county and get them to bid? Perfect. I would just get some of their input as well. We may flip it to them.
And I'm saying, yes, I have not talked to the council yet, but I'm assuming that we.
That worked well last time.
Yeah, well, you have to have a certified project manager on the job, and I don't have a few people I'm an enemy.
Okay.
So we'll have to have some involved from the county.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that the council will agree to do all of what you did the last time.
Yeah, I thought that worked out well.
I did too. Anything, you guys have any questions for Mary for now? Okay. All right, Mary, thank you very much, and we'll see you on the 13th.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the 2023 Budget General Fund and Capital Improvement. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. All right, so this budget that's in the book, you'll see, we did a little bit, it changes a little bit of modification. When everything discussed, it's all been included. The increase is $38,589. So we were able to do all the plans that we had discussed for $38,589.
This is the same one that was in there last week?
Yes.
It's, no changes have been made since the?
No, no changes have been made. Also, within this packet, you'll see that the grant budget is in there, SPOSS 4, SPOSS 5, 2020, and SPOSS 2. So all of those are listed in the back of that. Basically, that just goes in line with what we already have on the schedule for our capital improvement plan. And then the capital improvement document is behind that.
Anybody have any questions with regards to the budget or capital improvement plan? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023 Budget General Fund and Capital Improvement?
It needs to be two separate.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the budget for the general fund?
I'll make a motion.
James, you have a second?
Seven.
Chrissy on that one? All in favor? Can I get a motion to approve the capital improvement plan?
Capital improvement, is it the same as when we were talking about before?
And we had the hearing.
We was talking about the sidewalks and all that stuff.
Was we able to get the sidewalks in earlier, like we was talking about?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to look at that.
One, right here. Yeah, so we got sidewalks, we got the Pickens Street North moved up to 2024, and depending on how our, how it goes with Pickens County, that may not even come out of one of our SPOSS that they, we may be able to just do it out of that grant fund.
Yeah.
Or the drainage, whichever way. But then, we also, yeah, that's the biggest one. And then School Street sidewalks got bumped up to 2026, so.
Have a meeting with the bill this month. The real sidewalk.
Okay. If you'd be able to present some. Just manage, take it down. Well, if we move forward with the plan here for the park, can we, I thought we was gonna try to incorporate our sidewalk on School Street.
That's why the money's set aside for that.
Okay. Yeah, that was good, Mike.
Can I get a motion to approve the capital improvement plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. All right, next up is the Kitty Park Fence Bids. Set at sea.
There's three of them here. Two of them are from the same company, because we're getting some different ideas about how to put the fence in. So the first one has it where the corners are cut in due to some issues with the property. I did ask them to come back out and quote it as a rectangular bid, just so there was competitive with the other ones. So that's why there's two bigger prices from the same company.
We can still, we can still have them.
Y'all can adjust it however you want, once it's done. If you want them to cut the corners, that's fine, but that way, you and I already talked about that. So there's a quote to do the chain link, and there's also a quote to do the four rail fence, like we had down at the other park with the wire behind it, which is actually, I think, comes out.
Thinking it was less expensive.
Each state fence is the first one?
Each of them.
Your total for the black chain link is $8,372. Your total for the four rail with the galvanized wire is 7585. And the four rail with the vinyl coated privacy is 7955.
And if you want an eight-foot fence, you're gonna have to build one of these, either one of these courts. You want an eight-foot fence instead of six-foot.
On the front?
For the privacy. The back foot, back.
Back foot.
Or, yeah.
Side, side.
What was that before, do you?
It was, I don't know.
I don't see an eight-foot up there on top of hill.
Yeah, so I was just kind of getting this.
Majority of it, you're looking up from anywhere else. You're not gonna gain any privacy.
Right.
Slightest, you might a little bit get on the bottom end from somebody looking at that house, looking out a window, and then eight-foot's not gonna fix that.
Yeah, so it's just as simple as an option to put it in, so.
Are we getting pretty close to the property line? Like, yeah, I've been up before where it's up the hill.
No, it's over, like, pretty much on, I think I was pretty close to the property line, you know, when.
Coming down the far side where the two trees came down, dropping down the hill, coming almost down to the power, once it drops down the hill, he'll jog back toward the power pole.
Yeah.
Straight up to gully. We had talked about stopping it at the top of the swell, drainage swell, and coming up in an angle instead of putting the drainage swell in the playground, come up to the street, straight up, and then cornering back there too, since the grader found that sinkhole in that corner, that was a sinkhole outside of the playground area too.
Yeah.
That's what the jogs were for. But yeah, coming all the way down to the wood line this time, incorporating the new hill to put in, which by the way, looks good, though.
Yeah.
I just came up to it a little while ago, but it looks good, though.
And what is the proposal for Kent Fence?
So that should be the second man for each tree, which is even less.
Yeah, so it is with the taken, like, taken corners out.
The lower estimate.
That's the one that you and I were down there.
411 feet total.
That's 300 bucks, I think.
I like the black chain link, it's, it's good.
I like the four rail with the.
Cause it kind of keeps it.
Black galvanized, or, I mean, the black with every, like, that one.
It'll bind the wire in between them.
I just think that's more consistent with what we're, if we're gonna have matching, if we're gonna keep doing all this parking stuff.
Makes all the, them all similar.
No, we need to have similar fence.
That's what the plan here is, so.
Only downside is it'll climb on boards.
I haven't ever seen him climbing on that one. I know I've seen that school, the kids climb literally everything they can climb, sitting on top of the basketball balls down, like, literally sitting on top of basketballs, but I haven't ever seen him climb the fence. It doesn't mean they haven't, but I haven't seen him climbing it.
The fence is close to the playground where the other place is chain link, though, isn't it?
The one that's over, if that one is a four rail.
It's got a chain line at the sidewalk.
There's one small section that has chain link, but it's also, it's easier for the guys to maintain, like I said, than what happened to it with the four rail. It's easier for them to repair or replace that than it is change.
A section?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make sense.
But I asked the guys that were doing the fence stuff, too.
The front of it, Nathan, where you park your cars, that down there is chain link.
That's the only part of it.
Between the parking lot and the park, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Where you park your cars there.
When I was getting out about the other places, the wood fence is kind of further away from the playground, but the chain link is at the other place. It's close to that hill.
Yeah.
Outside of the play area, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, and it'll be the same for this one here, because the play area, that fencing, the only thing that you're gonna have that's gonna be close to the play area, it's really not close to there, but is up against the road, down at the bottom of it against the, you know, the wood area, it's kind of away from it, but the, what's coming up, Blue Ridge there, would be, it would be the.
The area that's on School Street is the four rail. And then the only.
If you don't get the chain link with the little spikes on top, people climb it too.
Yeah.
Over the fence, that's just their four climbing, no matter what.
Exactly.
Yeah. We'll look at what's on paper, which I don't really.
I know, I expect it to be more.
I don't expect it to be more, but the installation thing, I don't know, but.
The next bids, Kent Fence Company, four rail privacy, $9,660. And then a privacy and chain link is $11,020. The third proposal is Malden and Cook Fence Company. The four rail, Ranch Rail, six-by-six, double, blah, 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 on here, with black vinyl coated wire is 7108. And then the four, the four-foot high, six-gauge finish, black vinyl, chain link is $10,954.
But it's bottom, if you don't have the bottom rail, it's 87. Thing is, if you don't have the bottom rail, it's gonna put down at the bar, and it starts to kick out.
Where do you see that at? Right here, okay. I see it right here. Eighty-seven, we, yeah. So it's eighty-seven with three.
Bottom rail, yeah, it kicks out.
The bottom rail, it's not, $10,954. And the six-foot high, privacy fence, dog-eared, is $3,082. Eighty-foot high is $4,139.
There you go, that's best part of Peach State.
So William, what's your thoughts? Go around to it.
I'd go with Peach State, the one doing the clips, the two angled areas, and I like the four rail myself. Probably the black coated vinyl, which lasts longer, black coated vinyl or galvanized?
Black coated vinyl.
I think both last longer than wood, probably.
James, how about you?
I'm going with David.
Say that again?
I'm going with David.
Okay. Will you know James there? David, how about you, sir?
Yeah, I guess Peach State, I like the four-foot chain link, I said, behind the chain link, but I'm out of apologies.
Chrissy, how about you?
I like the Peach State, like, really, the four rail with the black coated vinyl wire.
And all these are, we already agreed that you wanted a six-foot.
Six-foot, yeah.
Privacy, okay. Okay, Nathan, you're next?
No.
What's your thoughts?
I like the chain link, if everybody else wants to do that, it's fine.
Okay. All right, so six-foot chain link, I mean, six-foot privacy. So everybody, everybody's in agreement on Peach State?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we had three for the black vinyl coated with the four board rail fence, and that was $7,095.
I think it'll actually be less than that. Do you want to meet with them again to tell them exactly where you want the, or, I think we did initially? Because I think the quote to have the corners chopped is actually $7,600.
Yeah, it's showing nice footage on that one, the second page of Peach.
Yeah, because it asks them to cut that off.
Right, and the second one is the corners chopped.
The second one's with the corners chopped, but just to make sure, like, he knows exactly where you want it at. So if we approve the higher estimate, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room, and then just knowing that it'll be much closer to the lower estimate, so we have a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, because that top one, remember you and I talked about, we're gonna angle the top as well.
Just to make sure everybody's okay with the one being chopped.
The reason for the corner, the reason for the corner being chopped at the top where the, where the, where you'll be parking, is because that's where that excavator kind of went in at. And so we know that there, there was some integrity there, it's filled in and stuff, but we don't really know why it happened. We don't know if there was a wash, because up on the top, up there, where's that road, is that School Street that meets there?
Spring Street and Blue Ridge.
So at Spring Street, we had that, where it caved in there, we had to get it filled in, so we had another hole here at the top. So what I suggested is, is William, when we met out there, was to just cut that corner, and then we'll just do a flower bed in it. That way, we don't have to worry about if it sinks or something like that, it doesn't, you know, it's not, nobody's gonna be standing in it.
Where they took the concrete out or something?
Yeah, underneath there was a hole, and we had to fill that in.
Which side is it on the?
The side, the root side.
Remember where the metal sign was standing at?
Yes.
Right there.
So underneath there, yeah.
Yes.
First, third time.
He told us back then he was only about a week and a half out.
Remember, it was a week's ago. He was the fastest one.
Five weeks, one hour.
I think that.
And so when Peach State was the fastest?
Yeah, he was the quickest one, it's hard to tell.
He did some work for my guys, once they were there. Highly recommended him, that's how I got the number to give to him.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the four rail with the black vinyl coated two-by-four wire and privacy fence for $7,955, knowing that it'll probably come in a little bit less with the corners chopped?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Hold on one second. So that was William and David, all in favor? You now, it's, okay. Next up is the city-owned property at Blue Ridge Avenue.
There's not really been in here on this, we put it on, I guess, last year. Need to know if you know, want to discuss this.
So are you guys?
We actually had two lots, combined them into one single lot. Memorial Health said that it would be a lot, they would allow in the bill, and have to per test, determine size, but especially if the city is in the process of purchasing assets, then it'd be a good way to get some of our reduced amount of that we already have invested.
So let's do a discussion, is there any reason why we would hold on to that property and not, and not go ahead and liquidate that property?
We'd pay $4,600 for that third section there.
About $20,000, is that?
Yeah.
Roughly.
So about twenty, roughly 25,000?
Have we made a purchase for us, a building for ownership?
We are, so I'm hoping that when this annexation comes in, that we'll be able to purchase two acres.
He actually called me tonight.
And how about a garden area, when we do? If we do City Island, like, what we're gonna do about the garden area?
Well, you have two acres, we might be able to do, maybe able to do something out there?
I'm fine with keeping this over there, that cautious, I mean, we may have to turn in the garden area when we go to City Island.
I actually put that on as one of the properties, I had him go look after that, and said it didn't just sound like.
It doesn't have enough sun.
Yeah, you'd have to take them in drains.
Yeah. It would have to have something, because it's not conducive to that.
I gave him, like, everything with the city, and I'd have him go look at everything, and they just said there wasn't enough sun to use that.
What else do we own?
We had the lot that we just sold, the one that was a non-billable lot, the one that they're currently using. I'd even told him, like, even the property, like, where the walking trail is, that's strip where the power line easement is, they could potentially even just do something kind of small there. Trying to think offhand, I don't know. I printed off everything that we had, and just had him just run through and look at everything, but the, where the, they currently are, I think it's a little over two acres of the city ends there, and they're only on a very small portion of it right now. Who's that? The, and the last plot was sold today, just that one.
Good. I'm really looking forward to the two acres, if we can get it, you know, out there for that, for our maintenance area.
We spoke to them, some more property, they're on there, once I through.
I don't think it was ever recorded. I'll go, I can go pull the deeds and look, I don't think it's ever.
We'll pick it, shack it or something.
Right there.
We can nail that property. And they made a total.
I always go for you.
And we had a mortgage on it. So with, like, for the King Drive, we did that some time.
I'm getting it.
Current property owners?
If we let it go, like I said, it's already been combined into one half acre lot, and it'll be to stay.
It has one parcel number, and the current address is 8 Blue Ridge Avenue. It was 68 and 80, and it had two different parcel numbers, which each lot was one quarter acre, so in theory, it could have been sold as two quarter acre plots.
But since we've combined.
We've combined it.
And they're allowed to be split back up in environmental health, we're probably gonna stop to that also, correct?
In theory, we probably could split it, since we're the ones that combined it, but just because, you know, probably the issues with selling it as quarter acre plots, we pushed it into one. And I've talked to Lea down at Memorial Health, she said that they wouldn't have an issue with letting somebody build on it, they would have to.
As a half acre lot.
Yeah, they would have to have a per test. There's a very, very small corner, I think it's the, maybe the northwest corner, it's in a flood plain, it's tiny, tiny portion, and I asked her about it, she said that wouldn't affect it, but they would have to have a per test, determine size, veterans, whatever, but it is built a lot. But then we could recoup some of the funds we currently.
And we were talking for about, like, listing and not bidding it?
Well, I think according to our policy, it has to be bid or auction.
There's a way to do it, where you can use, you can list it and use an agent, it still ends up having to follow some kind of auction-type bidding process, but there's a way to do it, that you can list it and put it out there.
Still get it advertised.
Which would be the way, if you were gonna sell something like that.
Yeah.
Something with some actual value, quite like this piece we did.
Yeah, well, this one, like, I mean, I put it in the papers and did whatever, but because you couldn't do anything with it, you weren't really running it through everything, so you have everybody in the brother trying to buy it. But that one, no one that's buildable, you'd be better off getting an agent, even though we'd still have to legally run ads and stuff, or than let them do their thing to get it out to whoever.
So what we have in both pieces of property?
I think about it, right at 20,000.
In both of them?
Yeah, because I think the one that.
Get out of taxes and everything.
You don't pay taxes on it.
But I mean, we had to.
We didn't have to pay it.
Okay.
They ended up.
So there's 25,000 on that one, and then the other one that they totaled out?
The one that we did recently was right at 20,000, and the one that he's talking about was like 4,500 or something.
You got a 100.
Yes. That's the one.
We got 100 out of it, we could buy that other place.
We have funds to buy it in a way, but it just kind of.
But it would really be nice.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna sell some bigger than what we're officially purchased.
Exactly. And see, we got two properties that we want there to, for that, for our master part, we also want to be able to purchase the Mr. Trout's place, so.
And it's also getting it back for the tax benefit, so then you have a property that's bringing in tax revenue, and it's cleaning up the area, you've got a new property there, a new home, you know, it just kind of generates growth. Right now, it's nothing.
Wash me. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Nathan, Chrissy?
Yeah, I like, Dan, we'll use the property to offset some of our, the other property that we need. Uh. But again, it's, it's.
We could potentially always use, like, some of the stuff down on Spring Street as a garden and stuff too, because that gets a lot of sunlight. We couldn't do anything with that previously.
If you pull City Hall up into that corner like we were talking about, the garden, that new section they plowed up, are you doing a corn for the community?
Yeah, it's on the hill back there.
That, yeah. Where it's at right now wouldn't affect City Hall or anything.
Yeah, well, they had said that, that they had looked at the area where they used to do the project down by Spring, Spring Street, but because of all the construction going on, we couldn't let them access any of that. But if the construction's over, it could potentially, you could potentially use some of that. And it does get a lot of sunlight.
I said I'm going to look for.
I have a couple people that aren't interested in this that have come in and are anxious about it. So just, I'm fine.
So we have one for getting rid of the property. James, you for getting rid of the property?
It might as much.
I don't care. But I want to, I don't want to give it away for.
Oh, I don't, I don't want to.
I don't want to give a hundred thousand dollars for a half acre, and so that's for twenty thousand.
Exactly. So, yeah, so you're saying, and I'll go ahead, so are you for, are you for put the property at the right way? Okay, Nathan, are you?
Sure.
So we would need to get together and find out exactly.
Yeah, we can see how it's done. Now, obviously, you use an agent for the commission. And so you won't take that into account. If you just have people beating down your door to buy it, and you knew what kind of numbers they were talking, you could decide whether you want to do a bid process and let those type of people know, or whether you want to put it out there with an agent.
So I have somebody I know right now who's interested, because he, he currently has a house in Cherokee, his family moving in, it's going to move into that house, and wants to build another house for himself and his wife, so they can stay in town. He's been trying to purchase a house that he can renew, and he just doesn't, I mean, he's like, purchasing something that, that's going to cost him an arm and a leg. I know he's interested, I know him and next door is interested, just as additional property to the house.
So how, how?
And I guess one option would be if you wanted, you could put it in the paper for bids, see what you got, reject them if they're not high enough, and then list it with an agent if that's about.
So maybe we do an appraisal and find out what the property's worth first.
Well, you can do that.
And then we could do a bid and see what you get on it, and go through that process. And if you don't, then we list it with an agent. Would that be, would that be okay with everybody? I mean, I know it's a process and it's going to take some time, but.
It's not hurting anyone.
It's not hurting anything.
Yeah, I mean.
So, share away.
I mean.
And then bid.
I think Barry does.
You have to praise.
I mean, appraisal is. So we'll do an appraisal, we'll get a bid, we'll get the bid, I get together, we'll need you to review that, have the council review it, and then we could put it out for bid. And then see what we get. If it's not where, anywhere near where we think it should be, then we can go a different route with an agent. That'd be the second option. Okay. So we'll, could you be checking on that?
Which step?
Of that, how to, how to go about doing the agent, and also do we have?
A corridor that feeds to the stream.
Yeah.
So it all feeds that with the stream. Let me answer your question.
It does, yeah, it does.
But we're going to try to plan to do this part of the bottom.
At the same time.
Or the side guy.
It's, it's one of those things to where the flow's kind of already going down through there, so it's kind of up with the contract, but we can't tell the contract, needs a method. So I can't tell them how to do it. You start telling them how to do it, then you got liability. Here's the plan. We can kind of, that makes more sense to kind of fix the morse side and work your way up, but it's, it's up to the contract. Again, a lot of details on those plans, so just sit down at the big table, flip through them, write down any questions you have. Again, these are all preliminary. Then finalize, we can switch gears, if somebody comes up with a better idea, and it's really homeowners in this area and this area that kind of.
Do you guys want to do a meeting just for reviewing all those plans? Do you want me to do that where you?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Why don't we do that? We'll set a meeting for just a work session.
Yeah, we also got questions, I know.
Yeah.
It's going to be a concrete bender in the ditch. Uh, probably not, but, but that's pretty much, I don't know if you've been up there on that rock side, but that's pretty much concrete ditch already. That's, that's rock. And, and.
Whole side is.
You really want to slow it down, sometimes just planes just looks pretty, but it really just speeds things up a little bit. And I would, I don't, you shouldn't have significant erosion down through there on that ditch line. It should be self-maintained because it is weathered rock on that side.
And ever to get this thing off the ground, what's, what, what's your availability? For this man, for, for meeting with the council, the work session, just go over all the stuff?
Whenever. I mean, I can, I can be available also next week, we could have to.
Do you mean that good for you Tuesdays, Thursdays, Thursday? You guys good for Thursday?
This Thursday?
Get it to next Thursday.
Let me look, my phone is dead. What about the, what about that, Thursday the twenty-second?
I'll be leaving for Wednesday.
Oh, we can't, that's right, yeah. How about Thursday the fifteenth?
I won't be here.
Tuesday the thirteenth? Tuesday the thirteenth?
Wow.
I think that'd work.
Okay.
Do you know where that crosses over to the other side? Do you know where that lands at the driveways that's currently there?
There, it's below.
Oh, oh, good.
Yeah, well below all the, this is.
That's the only thing.
And we're in the, there's no driveways on that side, the way that, that land falls, if they're making hillside back, it goes to there. And again, everything, all the extensions are in the ride already, so we won't have to be in the tent. No rideaway landing, no buying, no swapping, no agreements, the way we did before, some of the agreements that we have.
And did you say what?
Tuesday the thirteenth, seven P M.
And that's specifically just for discussion?
Yes, just for this to go through all the plans.
With a potential property owners? Or that'd be before, it'd be a good time to.
We can invite them, yeah.
We'll send out an email. I'm not an email, so we'll send out a, a letter.
If you would like, I can send an electronic copy of the whole set of plans. Sometimes it's easier to sit at your desk and kind of zoom in on specific parts.
I think that, if you could do that, I'll send it to me and Kelsey, and then we'll distribute it to the, the negative that you're calling on or ask for, or whatever, to take over as well.
And that's the final, everybody's comfortable and they think, you know. The math or the engineering, it's just a matter of, we want the home to be happy with the finished product they have. Are we going to work through the county and get them to bid it? Perfect. I would just get some of their input as well.
And I'm saying, yes, I, I have not talked to the council yet, but I'm assuming that we.
That worked well last time.
Yeah, well, you have to have a, you have to have a certified project manager on the job, and I don't have any people on the name yet.
Okay.
So we'll have to have some involved from the county.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that the council will agree to do all the like we did the last time.
Yeah, I thought that worked out well.
I did too. Anything, do you guys have any questions for Barry for now? Okay, all right, Mary, thank you very much, and we'll see you on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up is the twenty-twenty-three budget, general fund and capital improvement grant, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. All right, so this budget that's in the book, you'll see, we did a little bit of changes, a little bit of modification. With everything discussed, it's often included, the increase is thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So we were able to do all the plans that we, we had discussed for thirty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine.
This is the same one that was in there last week?
Yes.
It's, we have changes that have made since the.
No, no changes at all. And also within this packet, you'll see that the grant budget is in there, S F four, S F five, twenty-twenty, and S F two. So all of those are listed in the back of that. Basically, that just goes in line with what we already have on the schedule for our capital improvement plan. And then the capital improvement document is behind that.
Anybody have any questions with regards to the budget of capital improvement plan? I'm going to take that as a bonus. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three budget, general fund and capital improvement?
Needs me to talk about it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the, the budget for the general fund?
I'll make the motion.
James, you have a second?
Seven.
Chrissy on that one? On favor? Can I get a motion to approve the capital improvement plan?
Capital improvement, is it the same as when we're talking about the boards?
When we had the hearing.
We're talking about the sidewalks and all that stuff. Was we able to get the sidewalks in earlier like we was talking about?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
And, well, right here. Yeah, so we got sidewalks, we got the Piggins Street North moved up to twenty-twenty-four. And depending on how our, how it goes with Higgins County, that may not even come out of one of our S F, but we may be able to just do it out of there for a minute.
Yeah.
Or the drainage, whichever way. But then we also, yeah, that's the biggest one. And then School Street sidewalks got bumped up to twenty-twenty-six, so.
Have a meeting with, with this one, the little sidewalk.
Okay. Who's Bill, because that's. Just March, Higgins County. Well, if we move forward with the plan here for the park, can we, I thought we was going to try to incorporate our sidewalk on School Street.
It will be, that's why the money set aside.
Or that.
Okay. Yeah, that was good, Mike.
Can I get a motion to approve this, one for this plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
On favor? Yes, thank you. All right, next up is the Kitty Park fence bids. The seventh seat.
There's three of them here. Two of them are from the same company, because we're getting some different ideas about how to put the fence in. So the first one has it where the corners are cut in, did some issues with the property. I did ask them to come back out and quote it as a rectangular bid, just so there was competitive with the other ones. So that's why there's two bigger prices from the same company.
We could still, maybe, we, we can still have them.
Y'all can adjust it however you want once it's done. If you want them to cut the corners, that's fine, but that way it's, you and I already talked about that. So there's a quote to do the, the chain link, and there's also a quote to do the four rail fence like we had down at the other part with the wire behind it, which is actually, I think, comes out thinking it was less expensive.
Peach State fence is the first one.
Each of them.
Your total for the black chain link is eight thousand three seventy-two. Your total for the four rail with the galvanized wire is seven, seventy-five eighty-five. And the four rail with the vinyl coated privacy is seventy-nine fifty-five.
And if you want an eight foot fence, you're going to have to build one, you're going to want this course. If you want an eight foot fence instead of six foot.
On the front?
On the front. Good back foot, good back. Vert, yeah.
What was it before, do you?
It was.
I don't know.
I don't see putting eight foot up there on top of hill.
Yeah, so that was just kind of getting.
Majority of it, you're looking up from anywhere else, you're not going to gain any privacy.
Right.
Slightest you might, a little bit, get on the bottom end from somebody looking at a house looking out a window, and then eight foot's not going to fix that.
Yeah, so it's just, it's an, it's an option that you put in, so.
Now, we're getting pretty close to the property line. Like, you know, I mean, up before where it's up the hill.
No, it's over, like, pretty much on, I think it was pretty close to the property line, I mean, I went.
Down the far side where the two trees came down, dropping down the hill, coming almost down to the power, once it drops down the hill, he'll jog back towards the power pole.
Yeah.
Straight up the gully. We had talked about stopping it at the top of the swell, drainage swell, and coming up at an angle instead of putting this drainage swell in the playground. Come up to the street, straight up, and then cornering back there too, since the grader found that sinkhole in that corner, that was a sinkhole outside of the playground area too.
Yeah.
That's what the jogs were for. But yeah, it comes all the way down to the wood line this time, incorporating the new hill to put in, which by the way, looks good moving.
Yeah.
I just came up with a little alley, but it looks good moving.
And that's one of the proposals that Kent has.
So that should be the second thing, for Peach Street, which is even less.
Yeah, yeah, so it is with the taken, like, taken the corners out.
It's the lower estimate.
That's the one that you and I were down there.
Four hundred and eleven feet total.
Max three hundred bucks up there. I like the black cherry, that's it, I think that's good.
I like the, the four rail with the.
Because it kind of keeps it.
Black galvanized, or I mean, the black, whatever.
It'll bind the wire between them.
I just think that's more consistent with what we're, if we're going to have matching, if we're going to keep doing all this parking stuff.
Makes all the, all similar.
Then we need to have similar fences.
That's what I'm saying.
On the downside is inclined on the boards.
I haven't ever seen him climbing on that one. I know I've seen that school, the kids climb literally everything they can climb, sitting on top of the basketball balls down. And that, like, literally sitting on top of basketballs, but I haven't ever seen him climbing the fence. It doesn't mean they haven't, but I haven't seen him climbing it.
The fence is close to the playground where the other place is chain linked on it.
Yeah, the one that's over, if that one is a four rail.
It's got a chain line at the sidewalk.
There's one small section that has chain link, but it's also, it's easier for the guys to maintain, like I said, than what happened to it with the four rail. It's easier for them to repair or replace that than it is change.
A section?
Yeah.
I don't know, it makes sense.
And I asked the, the guys that are doing the fence stuff, too.
The front of it, Nathan, where you park your cars, that down there is chain link.
That's the only part of it.
Between the parking lot and the park, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, where you park your cars there.
What I was getting at about the other place is the, the wood fence is kind of further away from the playground than the chain link is at the other place. It's close to that hill.
Yeah.
Outside of the play area, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, and it'll be the same for this one here, because the play area, the, that fencing, the only thing that you're going to have that's going to be close to the play area, it's really not close to there, but is up against the road. Down at the bottom of it against the, you know, the wood area, it's kind of a wayfarer, but the, what's coming up, Blue Ridge there would be, it would be the area that's on School Street is the four rail. And then the only.
If you don't get the chain link with the little spikes on top, people climb it too.
Yeah.
Four foot fence, that's just their four climbing, no matter what.
Exactly. Yeah.
We won't look at it. Paper, which I don't really.
I know, I expected it to be more.
I don't expect it to be more, but. I mean, the installation thing, I don't know, but.
The next bids, Canton, Canton Fence Company, four rail privacy, nine, nine six, nine thousand six hundred and sixty. And then a privacy of chain link is eleven thousand twenty. The third proposal is Malden and Cook Fence Company. The four rail, ranch rail, six-by-six double block wall on here with black vinyl coated wire is 7, 7108. And then the four, the four-foot high, six-gauge finished black vinyl chain link is 10,954.
But it's bottom rail.
Yeah, you don't have the bottom rail, it's 87.
And if you don't have the bottom rail, it starts to kick out.
Where do you see that at? Right here, okay, I see it right there. Eighty-seven, yeah. So it's eighty-seven to three.
Bottom rail, yeah, it kicks out.
With the bottom rail, it's not, 10,954. And the six-foot high, privacy fence dog ear is 3,082. Eight-foot high is 4,139.
I think that's Peach State.
So will you watch your thoughts, go around to it?
I'd go with Peach State's, the one doing the clips, the two angled areas and I like the four rail myself. Probably the black coated vinyl, which last one, the black coated vinyl or the Almond?
Black coated vinyl.
I don't think both last longer than wood, probably.
James, how about you?
I'm going with it.
Say that again?
I'm going with it.
Okay. Will you know James there? David, how about you, sir?
Yeah, I guess Peach State, I like the four-foot chain link, I said behind the chain link, but I'm not a pro of that.
Okay. Chrissy, how about you?
Uh, I like the Peach State, the, like, William, the four rail with the black coated vinyl wire.
And all these are, we already agreed that you wanted a six-foot?
Six-foot, yeah.
Privacy, okay. Okay, Nathan, you're next? What's your thoughts?
I like the chain link, everybody else wants to do that, it's funny.
All right, so six-foot chain link, I mean, six-foot privacy. So everybody, everybody's in agreement on Peach State?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we had three for the black vinyl coated with the, with the four board rail fence, and that was 7,955.
I think it'll actually be less than that. Do you wanna meet with them again to tell them exactly where you want the corner? I think we did initially, cause I think that the quote had the corners chopped, section 7,600.
Yeah, it's showing most footage on that one, the second page of Peach State.
Yeah, cause it asked if it could be chopped.
Right, and the second one is the corners chopped.
The second one's with the corners chopped, but just to make sure, like he knows exactly where you want it. So if we approve the higher estimate, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room, and then just knowing that it'll be much closer to the lower estimate, so we have a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, cause that top one, remember you and I talked about, we're gonna angle with the top as well.
Just to make sure everybody's okay with the corner being chopped, like.
The reason for the corner, the reason for the corner being chopped at the top where the, where the, where you'll be parking is because that's where that excavator kinda went in at. And so we know that there, there was some integrity there, it's filled in and stuff, but we don't really know why it happened. We don't know if there was a wash, because up on the top of, up there, what is that road? Is that School Street that meets there?
Spring Street and Blue Ridge.
So at Spring Street, we had that, where it caved in there, we had to get it filled in. So we had another hole here at the top, so what I suggested is, is when we met out there, was to just cut that corner and then we'll just do a flower bed in it. That way we don't have to worry about if it sinks or something like that, it doesn't, you know, it's not, nobody's gonna be standing in it.
Where they took the concrete out or something?
Yeah, underneath there was a hole, we had it filled, filled in.
Which side, is it on the, on the?
The side, the roof side.
Remember where the metal sign was standing at? Right there.
Yeah, so underneath there, yeah.
First third time, does anybody know?
He told us back then he was only about a week and a half out.
Remember he was a couple weeks ago? He was the fastest one.
Five weeks, well, I don't know.
And so Peach State was the fastest?
Yeah, he was the quickest one, it's one of his.
He did some work for one of my guys, once I did that. I highly recommend it, until I got the number to give to him.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the four rail with the black vinyl coated two-by-four wire and, and privacy fence for 7955, knowing that it'll probably come in a little bit less with the corners chopped?
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Hold on one second, nice, so that was William and David, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Next up is the city-owned property at Blue Ridge Avenue.
We've already been in here on this, we put it on, I guess, last year. Need to know if you're going to discuss this. So we actually had, we actually had two lots, we might have made one single lot. My little health said that it would be a lot they would allow the bill owner to purchase, determine size, but especially if the city is in the process of purchasing assets, then it'd be a good way to get some of our reviews and designs that we already have invested in.
So let's, let's do a discussion, is there, is there any reason why we would hold on to that property and not, and not go ahead and, and liquidate that property?
We paid $4,600 for that third section there.
Okay, about 20,007, roughly.
So about 20, about roughly 25K?
Have we made a purchase for us, a bail in for an ownership yet?
We are, so I'm hoping that when this annexation comes in, that we'll be able to purchase two acres.
He actually called me tonight.
And how about a garden area, will we do? If we do City Hall, what about, what we gonna do about the garden area?
Well, you have two acres, we might be able to do a, maybe able to do some of it out there.
I'm fine with keeping this over, that cost is not, I mean, we may have turned in a garden area when we've been to City Hall.
I actually put that on as one of the properties, I had them go look after that, instead of taking it to sunlight.
It doesn't have enough sun.
Yeah, you'd have to take that into consideration.
Yeah. It would have to have something, cause it's not, not conducive to that.
I gave them like everything with the city owned, and had them go look at everything, and they just said there wasn't enough sun.
We have to, we own.
We had the, the lot that we just sold, the one that was a non-villable lot, the one that they're currently using. I'd even told them, like even the property, like where the walking trail is, that strip where the power line easement is, they could potentially even just do something kinda small there. Trying to think offhand, I don't know, I printed off everything that we had, and just had them just run through and, and look at everything. But the, where the, they currently are, I think it's a little over two acres of the city owns there. And they're only on a very small portion of it right now. There's that, the community one, and the last plot was sold to a, just that one.
Good. I'm, I'm really looking forward to the two acres, if we can get it, you know, out there for that farm maintenance area.
We spoke to them tomorrow, property, now, now, what's that real?
I don't think it was ever recorded, I'll go, I can go to Paul at Dees and look, I don't think it's ever.
We'll pick, shack this or something.
Right there. Since John's covering it.
We, we can nail that property, and name it a toll. And we've had a mortgage challenge. So with, like, for the King James, we did that same one.
The Peach State, I'm getting it.
Two houses?
If we let it go, like I said, it's already been combined into one half acre lot, and it'll be to stay.
It has one parcel number, and the current address is 80 Blue Ridge Avenue. It was 68 and 80, and it had two different parcel numbers, which each lot was one quarter acre, so in theory it could have been sold as two quarter acre plots.
But since we've combined it.
We've combined it in one.
And be split back up in environmental health, we're probably gonna stop to that also, correct?
In theory, we probably could split it, since we're the ones that combined it, but just because I mean, there are private issues with selling it as quarter acre plots. We pushed it into one. And I've talked to Leanne at Environmental Health, she said that they wouldn't have an issue with letting somebody build on it, they would have to have a perk test.
As half acre lot.
Yeah, they would have to have a perk test. There's a very, very small corner, I think it's the
Maybe the northwest corner?
It's in a flood plain, it's tiny, tiny portion, and I asked her about it, she said that wouldn't affect it. But they, they would have to have a perk test to determine size, veterans, whatever, and it's a building lot. But that way we could recoup some of the funds we currently.
And we never talked for, like, listing and not bidding it.
Well, I think according to our policy, it has to be bid or auction.
There's a way to do it where you can use a, you can list it and use an agent, it still ends up having to follow some kind of auction-type bidding process, but there's a way to do it, that you can list it and put it out.
It's still good advertised.
Which, which would be the way we were gonna sell something like that.
Yeah.
You could probably do that.
Something with some actual value, not quite like this piece we have.
Yeah, well, this one, like, I mean, I put it in the papers and did whatever, but because you couldn't do anything with it, we weren't really running it through everything, so you have everybody, their brother trying to buy it. But that one, knowing it's buildable, you'd be better off getting an agent, even though it would still have to legally burn ads and stuff, or then let them do their thing to get it out to whoever.
So what do we have in both pieces of property?
I would estimate right at 25.
In both of them?
Yeah, cause I think the one that
Taxes and everything.
You don't pay taxes on it.
But I mean, we had to.
We didn't have to pay it.
Okay.
They ended up.
So there's 25K on that one, and the other one that they took out?
The one that we did recently was right at 20, and the one that he's talking about was like 4,500 or something.
You got a tub, yes.
That's the one.
If we had a hundred, then we could buy that other place too.
We have funds to buy it either way, but it just doesn't.
But it would really be nice.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna sell something bigger than what we're officially purchasing.
And see, we've got two properties that we want there to, for that, for our master part, we also wanna be able to, to purchase the Mr. Trout's place, so.
And it's also getting it back on the tax notice, so then you have property that's bringing in tax revenue. And it's cleaning up the area, you've got a new property there, a new home, you know, it just kinda generates growth. Right now it's nothing.
What's your, anybody else having a thought on that, Nathan, Chrissy? Yeah, I like being able to use the property to, to offset some of our, the other property that we need. But again, it's, it's
We could potentially always use like some of the stuff down on Spring Street, the garden stuff too, cause that gets a lot of sunlight, we couldn't do anything with that previously.
If you pull City Hall up into that corner like we were talking about, the garden, that new section they plowed up, are you doing corn for the community?
Yeah, it's on the hill back there.
Where it's at right now wouldn't affect City Hall, really.
Yeah, well, they had said that, that they had looked at the area, but they just did the project on the Spring, Spring Street, because of all the construction going on, we couldn't let them practice any of that, but if the construction's over, it could potentially, you could potentially use some of that, and it does get a lot of sunlight.
I said I'm gonna look for.
I have a couple people that are interested in this, that have come in and are anxious about it, so I'm just.
So I've got one for getting rid of the property. James, you for getting rid of the property?
Didn't make this much.
Not yet.
I don't care, but I wanna, I don't wanna give it away for
Oh, I don't, I don't want it.
I don't wanna give a hundred thousand dollars for a half acre and sell it, it's for 20,000.
Exactly, so, yeah, so you're saying, and then I'll go ahead, so are you for, are you for putting the property up and sell it the right way? Okay, Nathan, are you?
Sure.
So we would need to get together and find out exactly.
Yeah, we can see how it's done, and obviously if you use an agent or the commission, and so you'll take that into account, if you just had people beating down your door to buy it, and you knew what kind of numbers they were talking, you could decide whether you wanna do a bid process and let those type of people know, or whether you wanna put it out there with an agent.
So I have somebody I know right now that's interested, because he currently has a house in Cherokee, his family moving in, he's gonna move into that house, and wants to build another house for himself and his wife, so they can stay in town. He's been trying to purchase a house that he can renew, and he just doesn't, I mean, he's like purchasing something that through the reverse, gonna cost him an arm and a leg. I know he's interested, I know him and my store is interested, this is additional property for the house, so how, how?
And I guess one option would be, if you wanted, you could put it in the paper for bids, see what you got, reject them if they're not high enough, and then list it with an agent if that's about.
So maybe we do an appraisal on it, find out what the property's worth first.
Well, you can do that.
And then we could do a bid and see what you get on it, and go through that process, and if you don't, then we list it with an agent. Would that be, would that be okay with everybody? I mean, I know it's a process and it's gonna take some time, but
It's not hurting any.
It's not hurting any of the agents.
Whatever.
So, right away. And then a bid.
I think we're done, so.
I mean, appraisal. I mean appraisal, that's all. So we'll do an appraisal, we'll get a bid, we get the bid, unpack it together, we'll need you to review that, have the council review it, and then we could put it out for bid, and then see what we get. If it's not where, anywhere near where we think it should be, then we can go a different route with an agent. That'd be the second option. Okay, so we'll, could you recheck in on that?
Which step?
Of that, how to, how to go about doing the agent, and also, do we have, do you have any bids that, you know, that, like, maybe a template?
We'll do the same thing we did with the, if we just bid, we'll do the same thing we did with the
Property up here?
Yeah.
So we have a template together, okay, well, we can talk about it at our next meeting here.
Do you have an appraiser?
No.
I've got one, you can.
Okay, if you could send that out. We can get that down. That'll, that'll let us know where we are, and I know property around here is going, it's expensive, so we should get a good, at least, much better than that, so. Next up is our IGA for mowing. So the estimate for Piggins County to do their, to do that mowing for us on Highway 5 is $2,520. And the bat wing mowing, which is gonna get down and get all that crap up for us, he said there's no extra charge for that, they have it to do it with. And they, and he did agree to do all of Highway 5 for us, if I'm not mistaken, and get all of that, all the way down, even this.
I think so, so it's city line, it's a county line, but that's also, that's a part of the being, we're cutting around.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll title, but I'm, when I talked with him the last time, it was all of Highway 5.
That was the question, right?
Yeah. So, any questions about that? Does that sound fair to you guys? He laid out what it is, fuel-wise, operator, pickup driver, and extra charge here, or extra flagger for Highway 5. Any questions on that?
Sound like a good price.
Okay, anybody, I'll go ahead then, and can I get a motion to approve the mowing for Highway 5, or a motion to approve the IGA with Piggins County for the mowing on Highway 5?
I'll make a motion.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
Nathan, David, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next up is new business, joint comprehensive plan resolution.
This is just the resolution to adopt the joint comprehensive plan of Piggins County, it's part of Jasper Nelson Talkinaw. It's already been turned in, advertised, all the meetings held, I think it's the DCA's already approved it, so it's just basically the resolution that all cities have to adopt and sign, then we have to send this back in.
Anybody have any questions about that? We get coming around about every five years, I think. Yeah, it's 2018, that's what had all the, you know. Yeah, it's twenty eighteen, that's, we've had all the, you know, stormwater and all the FEMA stuff on it. It's just, uh, that's one comp we did with them. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve it.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
William, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Next up is our building inspector and code enforcement agreements.
We've got this, um, oh, what actually, this is who they've been using in their current building inspections, and they also offer code enforcement. So Pickens County's using them, City of Ball Ground is using them, Ball Ground's using them for code enforcement and for, um, building inspections. They normally have a two-hour minimum, and he said he would waive the two-hour minimum because they're in between Ball Ground and Pickens, and they're already working for both of them.
I kind of liked this here, I know that, um, I have been in talks with Bill Wood, um, with the county of Pick, of Pickens County with regards to code enforcement, they do have, they have brought on their second marshal, they can pick up the code enforcement for the Pickens side, and we could do a separate IGA with Cherokee County for code enforcement for Cherokee side. However, if you guys take a look at this here, it, it's possible to do it through this company here and have a...
Yeah, it would come strictly through the city.
It would come strictly through the city, which is gonna come through the city, no matter if we do Pickens County and Cherokee County IGAs, or if we do this, but this just is something, I mean, didn't say Ball Ground is using this.
Ball Ground is using them, and every of the inspections were Pickens, and I actually talked to Peter Martin the other day about something else, and I think he's had him come out to some of his sites for something, and he said, yeah, they're good, I think they're, it's a good company. And, and even Bill Wood said, have they, you know, did they do a good job, they had no complaints about him. The guy that is working for him came by and stopped by just to, you know, put a name and a face together. An email on the prompt responses, no issues. So I still think it might be a good idea to have the agreement with the county as a backup, just in case, like, the sheriff's department ran into an issue, did they have the ability to contact the Martin's office or something? But not so much, it's some of the city abilities, this would probably be a better option.
On the code enforcement side, would they be able to make a, a right citation?
I would, I would think so.
If we authorized them, their code enforcement officer, sure.
Yeah, because even, I think, the department can be authorized to, to do, um, to do the citations, but I don't want to see them out.
The question would have been, will they?
I think, I would think so. I don't wanna speak for them, but I was, I have an impression that that's probably...
I hope that's what they're providing.
That's what we're made, don't know if they're just assessing and then recommending.
Now, if they're willing to do that, that would be a pretty good answer, I think. Then you don't have to worry about the county split, and dealing with politics and organizations and either kind of, you, you could run it.
Yeah, and I mean, we really haven't had a ton of issues here, some of the can't, it's, it's a theory now. We have, I think we have court here one time in five years, and it's just for non-compliance to respond to, you know, uh, the house that was...
Code enforcement, that's all you ask from clients anyway, not out...
Yeah, it is, exactly, I mean, and it's, it's on, we have a hot list.
If you can recoup some of the fees, presumably, if you had to pursue somebody in court, they're fined, could be paying back what you had to spend.
Yeah, and you would still send letters, you know, it's like this first warning, second, second notice, third notice. When it gets to fifth notice, and it's giant font, bold yellow, and they're throwing them in the trash, then you need somebody else to go out and say something, other than a letter that they're throwing in the garbage.
You would have a letter.
Yes.
I want to thank that they said they'd waive the two-hour minimum, so it would just be the nine and a half one? What do we pay in the way of now, seventy-five?
He's charging fifty and seventy-five, depending on the, um, what the inspections, yeah, seventy-five hundred, sorry.
Well, you can, you know, adjust your fee schedule to...
I was gonna say, we...
Our fee schedule has to be...
Potentially be worn by the, by the user.
We're paying, our fee schedule is lower than what we're paying him, that's why I keep saying that we've got to adjust this, because it's...
We'll take a look at that fee schedule and put something out to the council.
Pickens has adjusted theirs, since we adopted theirs.
We'll, um, I'll tell you what we'll do, um, for our July meeting, we will get this back on the, get this back on the agenda, and let's look at our fee schedule, and let's look at what, um, just the neighboring cities are using. Approved, fee schedule, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we can look at it if y'all want to during our work session, we got a work session, can you get the information together?
Well, Stan, like, if we can approve this for the building stuff, would be great.
Oh, William, we don't...
So we, we...
Don't, don't, don't. But, yeah, let's have an offline conversation. We'll just have an offline about it, but, yeah, let's look at, um, can you get some stuff together for the thirteenth for me? Um, for the council to look at during our work session, add that to their work session.
Yeah, but you can't, I was not here.
Can you get it in our work session?
You can, if I'm not here.
Yeah.
Just don't do it wrong.
There you have it. Just kidding, but, yeah.
And it's just that the thirteenth, I was thinking it was like a month from now.
So let's do, um, so just the fee schedule, let's get, get information for... Work session, work session, so we'll get the information for the work session, and we'll have a conversation. Add a, um... Two hours into it, go ahead and, and you add that, add a, um, one of those executive sessions, and I'd like that executive session right up front.
But that's getting into regular meetings, isn't it? You're not supposed to vote at the work session, are you?
It's up to you all, you can. Whatever, it's just your, it's your own choice, it's whatever y'all wanna do.
It's not, it's from the form. Technically, from the form, I should say. You can add an executive session now, if you think, that's just the kind of from the form, but it's easier to explain during the work here.
Yeah, let's do that. It's only gonna take us a couple minutes, but I, I think it's important. I'd like to, um, get a motion to amend the, the agenda, this agenda for this evening, June the fifth, twenty twenty-three, um, to add an executive work session, I mean, an, any, an executive session.
Personnel.
Yeah, for personnel. William Sandler, can I get a second?
Say it.
James, all in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Oh, which step?
Now, are you doing that again?
Um, we're gonna do it.